Okay, we are live and starting the recording. Okay, we're live. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach, held Tuesday, January 18th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Let a roll call. Councilmember Postlely.
Here.
Councilmember Lester.
Here.
Councilmember Bendo.
Present.
Vice President Trastan.
Present.
President McGinnis.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Corporation Counsel, Richard Barrios. We now have a salute to the flag.
Councilman Lester, would you be so kind to do the pledge?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Donna.
Yes, thank you, Don.
All right, folks, just a quick announcement before we get started. Items three and four have been taken off the calendar. Items three and four have been taken off the calendar. Go right ahead.
Welcome to the second meeting of the City Council in January 2022. I think we'll start with the City Manager's report.
Thank you. The first person up is Commissioner Walsh, Police Department.
Can I be heard? You guys hear me?
Yes.
I think you can see me, I'm not quite sure why. No idea why you can't see me. All right, do without me. Do it out my face. Let me see, let me just check my settings real quick if you don't mind.
All right, try it now.
Okay, can you see me now?
Nope, you still got the snowman face. There we are.
There you are.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Sorry about the delay there. So this evening, I want to bring to the attention and some actions of one of our auxiliary police officers. On August 18th, 2021, auxiliary police officer Margarita Tamret was out patrolling the streets in the evening time, and she hears a call come over the air of a drunken, a motor suspected of drunken DWI call come over. She's paying attention to the street, she's paying attention to the surroundings, and she sees the car that came over the radio pull into a gas station on Long Beach Boulevard. She immediately gets on the radio, notifies the units that are responding that she sees the car, and she pulls into the actual gas station and starts to observe the car. The person was at the pumps, and she winds up, you know, she actually winds up engaging in conversation with the suspected drunken motorists to actually prevent the motorists from driving away until the officers show up. Officers do show up, and what actually happens is she was close enough to the person to actually smell the odor of alcohol in their breath to actually see their bloodshot eyes. And the person that was actually stopped was a woman who was, she was pretty volatile. She was highly intoxicated, she was volatile. She wound up actually giving our officers a very, very difficult time. She spit in the officer's face when she, in the police officer's face when she was placed under arrest. She went to kick the officers while they were doing arrest processing. So it wasn't really a nice person. And the thing I really want to point out is that auxiliary Officer Tamret went above and beyond to make sure that the people of this city were safe that night. And she actually, she put herself in harm's way to make sure that a drunken motorist wasn't able to leave the scene and possibly invade or even possibly kill somebody. And I can't say enough about our auxiliary officers. Officer Tamret went above and beyond what the call of duty. You know, they have about 20 active members right now. From what I understand, I was talking to Mike Sparr tonight, the head of the organization, the inspector of the organization, and he said they probably have about three more joining. He's really been working hard to recruit more officers. Just this Monday, yesterday, we were all out there on the MLK walk, and most of the people doing, a lot of the people doing our traffic control were volunteers. You know, so I really want to extend a congratulations and a thanks to Officer Tamret for going out of her way to really make a difference. Fantastic work by her, and I understand that tonight, the City Council has a proclamation that they're going to be offering her. So I want to say thank you to the Council as well.
All right. Police Officer Tamret, on behalf of the City Council and the residents of the City of Long Beach, we just want to thank you for your dedication to this community and your quick thinking. It was really commendable where you put public safety first, and you're just another shining example of how many good people we have in Long Beach and how we need to recruit more auxiliary police officers to assist you out there. So I can't wait to see you in person. I'm sorry that we couldn't do that in person, but again, your service and dedication is completely appreciated by the entire city, and it's an honor to live in the same community as you. So thank you again. Thank you.
Yep, she's on perfect. All right, great.
Hi, I just want to say thank you, Commissioner, and to the Council for always supporting us, because we can't do what we do without your support. So when we go out there every night and we know that, you know, you're backing us, it really helps.
It's also thanking you tonight. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
And the teamwork that you have with the auxiliary and the Police Department is outstanding, and we're very proud of that in this community.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you as well, and next time I see you, I will get you an iced coffee.
Thank you. It's still, it's single digits, and I'm still drinking the iced coffee.
Great. It's a great opportunity, it's a great volunteer experience.
Yes.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next we have Mr. John McNally to give us a couple of updates.
Okay, and I'll just say I have a proclamation for Margarita in my office, so unfortunately, we are doing things virtually at the moment, but we will get that to you through the auxiliary. City Manager asked that I give an update on COVID, so I will jump right into it. As of the week ending yesterday, January 17th, 70.9% of Long Beach's total population is fully vaccinated. Unfortunately, the numbers in terms of cases are lagging at least a week behind for the reporting that's out there right now, but as of the week ending January 11th, there were 944 positive cases of COVID-19 in Long Beach. That is 4.02 per day per thousand residents. That's easily triple, if not quadruple, what we had at any point in time in the pandemic thus far. The good news is, though, those numbers are lagging, and as we're seeing across the state, we seem to have hit the peak, and we're on our way back down from the most recent surge. Evidence of that is for the week ending the 17th, the seven-day average for Long Island is at 17.6%. We were in the upper 20s two weeks ago, so that's obviously moving in the right direction. Evidence of that is yesterday's positivity rate was 13.9%, so that's averaged into the seven-day average, but all of those numbers seem to be moving in the right direction. Little bits of news or resources for the community. Mount Sinai South Nassau, in partnership with Town of Hempstead, the Vaxmobile will be back in front of City Hall this Friday from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM in order to provide vaccinations and boosters. That's Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson. You do need, they're not taking walk-ups at this stage of the game because of the demands, so you do need to schedule an appointment. You can do so at southnassau, excuse me, southnassau.org/sn, that's SamNancy/vaxmobile, V-A-X-M-O-B-I-L-E, or by calling 516-377-5333. Again, that's 516-377-5333, and that's for Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccinations or boosters. The other bitter news, as of today, the federal government's program where they are offering four free at-home test kits to all households in the United States started today. That website went live. That website is covidtests.gov, covidtests, plural, with an S, .gov. It's for free at-home tests per household, and it takes approximately seven to 12 days from signing up for it to ship to you. So these are, the idea behind this is order them, have them on hand for when you need it. This is not an immediate response thing, because it's obviously getting sent through the United States Postal Service. So that's it for COVID. The only other update or mention that Donna wanted me to give or the City Manager wanted me to give is, as the Council is well aware, this Thursday, the 20th, at 7:00 PM, we will have a Council Working Session, and the agenda item for that will be a presentation on and discussion of parking meters for the Central Business District. So it will be staff and a potential vendor for parking meters for the Central Business District. It's an informational session. It's to get the Council up to speed on what staff has been doing, for you to ask questions, give insight, give direction to us. Public comment, it does not take place during working sessions, but it is fully anticipated that the Council will, quote-unquote, "touch" this subject at least two more times before anything becomes a reality, and during those times, it'll either be, you know, council, regular council meetings on the first and the 14th, or the working session in between. So there will be plenty of opportunity for residents to weigh in, but this is an opportunity for residents to learn about it, as well as the Council, and along with the Council, and for the Council to ask questions and give staff and our potential vendor direction as to where we want to go with this. So that's what I have for you tonight.
John, can I ask a question?
Of course.
The tests, are they just the rapids, or are they both, or?
They are, they are just the rapid, so it's, you know, it's the 10, 15-minute immediate results. It's obviously not as accurate as a PCR, but they are, you know, it gives you, it gives you a solid indication, and the accuracy rate is in the 80% to 90% range, so they're pretty reliable.
Okay, thanks.
You bet. Anyone else? Thanks so much.
And we have Ronnie Kleiman on. If you can move her up, is that possible? There were some questions about Lido School, the after-school program, I believe it was, and Ronnie can answer, she can give us an update on where they are.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I don't, my camera, I don't have access to a camera, so I'm sorry for the blank face, and I put on lipstick for this meeting, so I'm a little disappointed. Thank you so much, Donna, for giving me an opportunity to speak. I know there's been some question about the JCC taking over after-school in Long Beach, and I know that it's very difficult for people with change and adjusting, and it's been a rocky start, but we're really on the road to, to the rest of the school year being fabulous. On Friday night, January 14th, the Office of Children and Family Services finally gave us approval and a license to run our after-school program out of Lido School, which we started today. Everything went great, our staff was there in place. We have brought on some new staff, we've brought on more training for our staff, we're looking to bring in some enrichment programs, and the children, at the end of the day, the most important thing is how the children are, and they're really doing well, they love our staff, they're having a good day, and we're looking forward to just going on like that. And if anybody has any specific questions, please feel free to reach out to me at the JCC at 516-634-4182. Thank you again.
Okay, there's no questions. If we can bring up Commissioner Fabrizio, just to give us an update on that water main break.
Evening, everyone. Can you see me? I'm just here.
It's hard to hear you.
We can, yeah, we can hardly hear you, and we can't see you.
Evening, everyone. I just wanted to take the opportunity to praise the continued hard work of our Water Transmission Department.
Can you speak up a little bit, Joe?
Into the mic, maybe?
I'll try to speak louder. I just wanted to take a moment to praise the continued hard work of our Water Transmission Department. We received a call at approximately 6:00 AM on Tuesday, January 11th, 2022, that there was a water main break at the intersection of Long Beach Road and Shore Road. The Water Department responded, had it shut down by approximately 8:15 AM. They notified the Fire Department, they notified the Police Department, they notified myself, and the Water Protection Plan. And by the time I got down there, they actually had it under control, they had isolated the water main break. It turned out that the 16-inch water main actually blew off, and it happened because the contractor was digging, excavating to install forms, and when they were digging into the forms, they actually took the thrust block that was holding on the 16-inch cap on the water main, so it actually blew off. So all the water actually went on to the end of the site, and a lot of the water ran on to the city street wall. So basically flooded their site, and it was subsea temperatures, and the Water Department responded quickly and promptly and had it under control within, within 2 hours and 15 minutes. So I just wanted to, again, praise them for their hard work. Just, one question came up regarding how do they compensate the city for working overtime? Like, in other words, they had to come in at 6:00 in the morning in order to get home in the morning. The agreement that we have within the government is, as part of the permit for the project, they are upgrading all of the statutory school names on Riverside Boulevard. They're actually abandoning 16-inch water main that runs on Shore Road, putting a 20-inch diameter water main on Broadway, and we worked out a price of $260,000 of funding to compensate the city for my time for construction inspectors' time in my office, for the water department's time, for the school department's time. And in the aggregate, I estimate that it was worth approximately $260,000. I have that check, which I can share with you. Overtime is excluded from that $260,000, so we will record the time that they spent the other morning, and we're going to bill that for that. They will pay. So it's a win-win situation, where, you know, we're all getting off, students upgraded, they're compensating the city for any time they spend on the project, including overtime.
John or Donna, could you, can you paraphrase what Joe said in terms of the cost? Because it was very difficult to hear him.
Yeah, I apologize. We received $260,000 as a permit fee for the project. And to establish that, you know, I did a whole breakdown of how much time it cost the city as far as employees done, and I can share that with you, it was very detailed, how much I felt it would have cost the city to basically support this project with our Water Department, with our Sewer Department, with my department and engineering. It's a lot of time and effort.
Right, but you did say that overtime was excluded.
Right, we're gonna, I told them, there was no way to know how much overtime we'd spend on this project, like, an unforeseen condition like this, which is like 4:00 hours in the morning, we're going to bill them and report that separately, and they were issuing a check separately.
Okay.
Couple of other instances in the last few months where we had to stay away, so we will report that and bill that separately. So that's separate from the $260,000 permit fee that we charged them.
So when, when the break took place, was it due to work actively going on at the time, or was it work that had been done and weakened the area around the cap?
Well, it was very early in the morning, so it must have, a cap is actually secured to be able to water main, but held on not only by the, what do you call it, the painting brand that holds on the cap, but it's held on by what's called a thrust block. So if that thrust block is removed, nothing in the cap is necessarily going to lose, but taking away the extra support that's actually holding it on. So that blew off.
Yeah, I guess what I, what I was getting at was if it happened at 6:00 in the morning, and it happened because they were actively working at the time, they shouldn't be working at 6:00 in the morning. That's what I was trying.
In other words, it wasn't actively working. I think they removed it the day before.
Okay, all right, that's what I was getting at. Okay, all right.
Blew off early in the morning. They got it, you know, if it happened in the middle of the night, it certainly would have been worse. Again, the Water Department responded promptly and addressed the situation.
So the takeaway is that the water main break in this, you know, in this instance, is cost-neutral to the city. We will recover any incremental costs that we, that we had incurred, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
And we will work on his mic.
I apologize, yeah, that's, you know.
No problem.
That concludes my report.
Okay, Donna, thank you very much.
Okay, on to the regular calendar. Our first item tonight is a public hearing for a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for premise 64 West Park Avenue, third floor, for a tattoo studio. And I believe the proprietor is on, let me get her unmuted. Bear with me one second. Taryn, I've allowed you to speak, you can unmute your mic.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
Hello, Taryn.
Hi, how are you?
Good, we missed you last time. A picture of you is up on the screen.
I don't know, my face is here. I don't know why it's not showing you guys my face.
We see your hair, though.
Thank you so much. I feel bad that you guys can't see me, I don't know why. It's not working. All right, well, either way, yes, I apologize for missing the last meeting. I did not, I had spoken to the City Clerk's office, I originally turned my paperwork in, I think, mid-December, before the holidays, and then the holidays got a little crazy, and I don't know if I missed an email from you guys. I had spoken, and I was told, with the Clerk's office, and told I was going to be reached out to, but I didn't expect it. I honestly expected to get like a phone call or something in the mail, but I couldn't find any emails, so I apologize for missing the first one. I was so excited to see that I was on the roster for tonight's meeting, so I really appreciate you guys' time.
Sure, thank you, Taryn. You know, we really appreciate you taking the time to join us. I was wondering if you could tell us about the hours of your, of your operation.
Happily. I also just want to mention, there was a slight, there was an error on my paperwork, it's actually 46 East Park Avenue.
Oh.
Just so you guys know, and it is still the third floor.
Okay.
But just so you're aware of that, but otherwise, as far as hours go, it is a third floor, it is going to be a private studio, so the hours of operation aren't necessarily going to be to the public, so it'll basically be a by appointment-only operation.
Okay, and how many employees do you expect to have?
Currently, I am the only definite, like, technically full-time employee. I do have an apprentice currently working under me, but her, she doesn't have any appointment basis yet or anything like that, so it's kind of just a matter of what time she can give me. And then I will most likely end up having one person working at the counter, also part-time, so, I mean, at max, currently, right now, I'm looking at three, but I am hoping at some point, maybe four. We'll see if I get another artist.
Okay. Does anyone else on the Council have any questions? No?
Just for clarification, where 46 West Park is exactly?
46 East Park Avenue.
East Park.
It's, yeah, it's above, it's above H&R Block across the street from Stop &amp; Shop.
Okay. Dave, will you make corrections on that?
I'll call for a motion before we vote.
Okay. Well, with senior weather question, I guess we could move on to the vote, or Taryn, do you have any questions for us?
Um, I don't believe so. I think that's pretty much everything, unless you guys have any more questions for me.
Does the public have any questions?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, I have Eileen Hatcher. Eileen, I'm going to, oh, there you go. Go ahead, Eileen. Eileen, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi there, it's Paul Fletcher, I'm on Eileen's computer. Just wondered, on the third floor, is the third floor zoned commercial, because that would be a commercial use, as opposed to an office that's a retail use, as I understand.
I'm under the impression that the building is commercially zoned, there's another, there's an acupuncturist below me, there's H&R Block on the first floor, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Someone has, someone can mute. Thank you. Okay, so at this point, it looks like we just have some corrections, Dave?
Oh, yeah, so first, if we want to vote on everything, I just need a motion to correct the address. Do I have a motion to correct the address?
Motion.
Second?
A second, whoever.
Voting. Councilmember Postlely.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Vice President Trastan.
Yes, and welcome to Long Beach.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
Okay, and we want to vote on the item now?
Yeah, yes, please, so she can get a better evening. Thank you, guys, so much.
We're going to go on to calendar. Item number two, resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for premise 46 East Park Avenue, third floor, for a tattoo studio. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
We got that.
Tina.
Okay.
Technically, yeah.
Okay. Voting. Councilmember Postlely.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo.
Good luck, and yes.
Vice President Trastan.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes, and welcome, welcome to the community. Best of luck.
Thank you all very much, I really appreciate your time and all your well wishes.
Take care.
Did you guys need me to stay on for the rest of the meeting, or I'm all good?
You're all set.
Thank you very much, everyone, have a great evening, all right?
You too.
You too. Okay, on to the regular calendar. Item one is approval of minutes for primary meeting December 21st, 2021, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Voting, Councilmember Postlely.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
I'm staying.
Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Vice President Trastan.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
Okay. Items three and four have been taken off the calendar. Item five is a resolution designating a City Council member to serve on the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Hey, is this a two-step process, Dave?
Yes, it is. I was just getting to that. The item currently has the, the member blank, so I need somebody to make a motion to fill in the blank.
I made a motion to put Roy Lester's name in. I second.
Motion to add Roy Lester to the, to the item. Councilmember Postlely.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Or you're muted.
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Vice President Trastan.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
Okay. And any, okay. Go on to questions from the Council and the public.
Does anyone from the Council have any questions or comments about the appointment? Anyone from the public?
Right now, I have no hands raised. Hey. All right, moving on to our last item. Item six is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of ordinance to amend the code of ordinances in the City of Long Beach regarding motor vehicles and traffic and vehicles for hire. This is a publication-only, hearing will be held February 1st at 7:00 PM. This is a publication only. Hearing will be held February first at seven P M. I'll see the voting of the last two remaining items. So item five is a resolution designating a city council member to serve on the board of fire commissioners. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting. Councilmember Postlely.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Vice President Reston.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes, and I expect great things from Councilman Lester, so thank you.
Thank you.
Item six is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding motor vehicles and traffic and vehicles for hire. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting. Councilmember Postlely.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Vice President Reston.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting. Councilmember Postlely.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Vice President Reston.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes. Okay, at this time, we'll go to good and welfare. As a reminder, it's three minutes to speak on any topic of your choosing to address to the council. Please remember to respect the position and stick to your time limit. Thank you.
Okay, folks, if you want to speak in good and welfare, you can use the raise-your-hand feature, and I'll pull you up one at a time. Keep in mind, I am keeping the three-minute clock when we get down to, if you hear beeping in the background, that's me with the clock going off in the background. It means your three minutes are up, and you'll have to wrap it up in a sentence, too, before I mute you. All right. First one is Michelle Frank.
Can you unmute this, Frank?
Hold on one second. Let me, why is this not letting me? Oh, there we go. Oh. Unfortunately, Ms. Frank, hold on, they're saying you're using an older version. It's not letting me unmute you. Hold on. I'm going to have to pull you up on the panel. Give me one second.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Michelle. Can you state your name and your address, please?
My name is Michelle Moser, and I live at two fifteen Parente Lane South, but my children attend Lido Elementary School, so I'm speaking as a parent of a school from Long Beach School District.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Okay, greetings. My name is Michelle Moser, and I'm a mother of two boys at Lido Elementary School. For years, we have used the morning and aftercare programs at Lido, and we're very happy with the level of care my children received. The crew was attentive and wonderful. My kids were very happy and cared for, and now this is no longer the case. I am writing this because I and many other Long Beach families who I am speaking on behalf of, I sent out a form and gathered much information from many parents, and we are all very unhappy with the level of care that our children are getting at the J C C. Our children are not being attentioned to or played with. A worker actually told my son, I don't have to pay attention to you. I am just here for the money. Nobody is helping the children with their homework as they used to do when the aftercare program was in the care of the City of Long Beach. Many of our children are being bullied, and parents are being told, yeah, that kid is handsy. Yeah, you're going to have to deal with it. Yeah, I heard about that. Yeah, I know. Our children are getting hurt and we are not being notified. Children have come home with black eyes, bruises. And one instance, the woman said that she was the only one caring for the children. None of the other people were there, so she couldn't leave to go attend to the child who had gotten hurt. There are countless other issues involving billing problems, pickup problems, showing up in the morning, and nobody's there to care for our children, and we have to wait. I myself had to call the Lido Elementary School main office because I went to drop off my kids and no one was there. They are completely, they are very inflexible, and I've spoken to Ms. Kleiman, who, very lovely woman. I've spoken to Ms. Silverman. I've spoken to Ms. Jimenez, but things are not being done. Their staff is not all entirely CPR certified. They are not all certified. None of these people are certified. There are twenty-something or twenty-year-old children watching our children. There are no adults there. The only adult that was at the Lido Center was let go for personal reasons or left for personal reasons, and they keep turning over staff. We are very unhappy. Is that three minutes? Or, I mean, I have much more stuff to do. I have parents that wrote me complaints about their kids being bullied, about staff sitting on the phone and not engaging with children, going to pick up their kids and seeing the people outside. Children comes home with lumps and bruises. One kid came home with a black eye, and one parent said, the City of Long Beach before care rarely if ever had any of these incidents occur. Not to mention their staff was friendly, nurturing, and always went out of their way to ensure my kids felt welcomed and comfortable upon arriving, especially when they appeared uneasy and leading up to when they left for class. They knew and addressed my children by their names and cared for them as though they were their own children and grandchildren. I would love to see the old staff returned and the City of Long Beach program be reinstated. And like I said, a lot of these people are not CPR and first aid certified. So please bring our people back. We had wonderful people, Mary Louise, Jordana, Frank. I could name them all. Edie, Natalia. They were wonderful people who cared for my children as if they gave birth to them themselves, and we need that back in Long Beach. Thank you.
That's your time.
Thank you, Ms. Moser. I know the state comptroller's office had serious concerns about the city running the aftercare program. Donna, can you address that, please?
Yes, it was several concerns once I arrived here about that particular program. And we did talk to the state, and one of the things is that the city would get out of the childcare business because the city, any city should not be within the childcare business. Ronnie Kleiman is on here to address any of your needs. I understand you did talk to her. I also understand that the gentleman you said that made the comment about the child is no longer working there. The only option would be that, and that's up to the J C C, is to hire the women that you're talking about. But the city, in fact, did give up their license because we are not in the childcare business, and it was shown on paper from the comptroller's office that we were losing a significant amount of money within the city running the program. And so would you like Ms. Kleiman to respond, or would you like to just to talk to her again off camera, or?
I mean, I have spoken to Ms. Kleiman. It's a lot of issues that we're having. A lot of people, like people whose kids have COVID, they still have to pay for three weeks of beforecare and aftercare, even if their kids aren't there. We have the Lido enrichment programs, and if your kids go there, you still have to pay. If you, like, they're very inflexible with billing, and a lot of people, like, why should a mother have to pay for three weeks of morning and aftercare if your child is COVID and not in school and not even there? But they refuse to vote for anything.
I understand that, and so I will talk to Ms. Kleiman to see if she will hire some of the staff that work there. What I will say, so we got to find an even balance. The city wasn't on top of their billing, and you're saying they are too stringent in their billing, so we have to find a happy balance. So what I will do is I will talk to Ms. Kleiman in the morning and talk about potentially hiring some of the staff from the city that were working there to help them out.
And Ms. Kleiman, feel free to call me. I'm home tomorrow because unfortunately, my son has COVID, and so I'm home all week.
And I don't want you to give me your number on here, so I'll get it from Ms. Kleiman tomorrow, and I'll give you a call.
Oh, thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moser, for expressing your concerns tonight, your very serious concerns. We appreciate it. Dave is?
Yep, hold on, just moving people around. Next is Robin Donovan.
Hello. Hi, Ms. Donovan. How are you?
Fine. How are you doing?
Good. Welcome.
Good. My name's Robin Donovan, and I'm a resident of Long Beach. I live in the Canals. I want to say congratulations to Roy Lester, Tina Postlely, on being elected to the Long Beach City Council, as well as John Bendo being re-elected, and congratulations also to you, Karen and Liz. On January tenth, twenty-twenty-two, the City of Long Beach purchasing agent opened one bid for twenty-four additional lifeguard stands costing the city sixty thousand. Because the city is so financially strapped, perhaps the city could offer the public and businesses a chance to purchase a lifeguard stand for twenty-five hundred dollars as the city did with the benches on the boardwalk. The city could highlight those people, businesses, as sponsoring a lifeguard chair. And this is just an idea that I had today after watching the bid last week. Thank you.
Ms. Donovan, this is Donna Gaden speaking. Thank you very much for that idea. I will talk it over with staff tomorrow. As you know, that it was pulled because we're going to put it back out to bid again. Yeah, we're going to put the whole thing back out to bid again, but thank you very much for that idea.
I think it would really be worthwhile. I think you'd get at least sixteen people wanting to purchase a lifeguard chair or stand, and like I said, making it known to the city and its residents would be a good PR piece as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. Great idea.
I'm sorry, Robin. That is a really good idea, and I look at the number of people that have been trying to buy benches. We have a waiting list of, what is it, almost a hundred or something? I'm not sure, but I know there were three hundred. Three hundred. So a lifeguard stand is a great idea, and, you know, I'm just surprised. I didn't think of it. I don't know if anybody else did, but I didn't. So, thank you.
It's a good, a really good idea.
All right, our next speaker is William Depper.
Yes, hi. I really just have a couple of things to bring to the council. My name is William Depper. I live here in Long Beach, down by Laurelton and West Broadway. Again, I'm bringing to the attention the graffiti on the boardwalk, especially on the assisted living facility. I brought it to Ms. Gaden's attention in the middle of December. And also, one time to the police commissioner, who said that they take action quickly to have it covered up, and it's still out there as of tonight. So I took a picture again, and I emailed it to Ms. Gaden. And also the streets around here, because I do mostly walking in Long Beach, it's terrible how much garbage is in between cars, parked cars, and I mean, you want to install meters. I mean, I think it should be cleaned up before any installation of any meters. And really, that's about it. That's all I have for tonight. Congratulations to the women. I'm really happy for you. I know a lot of powerful women that are in all different kinds of positions. I think it's great.
Thank you.
All of you.
Commissioner Walsh, did you want to come in?
Sure. So we're aware of the graffiti on the assisted living down near the Hockwood House. We were actually even in there this evening trying to get the management to paint over the two doors that are currently covered in graffiti. We're also aware of the one right on the boardwalk, on the ticket booth, but you know, we're kind of battling with the elements there. That's a stained booth. If you try and stain that booth when it is this cold out, you'll wind up having to re-stain the booth, you know, the entire booth again. So we're working with Tommy Cannon and Maintenance on that one as well. But we were in there today. I'm trying to even get ahold of the owner of that facility to try and establish a dialogue with him to see if we can get them to be more quicker, I should say, in covering up their graffiti. It has been up there a while. We see it, and we actually have been working, trying to get that covered. We can't, as a city, go and paint private property like that without some sort of liability in that building. You know, usually, they're pretty good. They're just not being on top of it right now. So we hear what you're saying, Mr. Depper, and we are on it. I'm sorry that one hasn't been covered more quickly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And as far as the wind stirring up our garbage, seems like a constant battle. Donna, any comment on that?
No, it is a constant battle. We get some groups of people out to help, to clean. The last couple of days, we even had the street sweeper out yesterday. The wind has been unbelievable. What we do ask is that when residents have trash, they dispose of their trash properly. And then sanitation, when it's blowing from the actual trash can, sanitation can address that. But things that are in between parked cars, some of it is that residents have not disposed of it properly. So we're doing the best we can for right now, especially with the winds being what they are. But thank you for bringing that to our attention, and I will bring it up to sanitation once again.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Sam Pinto. Sam, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Good evening.
Yes.
Hi, Sam.
I just want to wish, hey, everyone. I just want to congratulate everyone on their elections. I wasn't able to participate in the first meeting. Congratulations to Mr. Bendo, Mr. Lester, Ms. Postlely on your elections and reelection, Ms. McGinnis, Madam President, and Mr. Reston, Vice President, congratulations. And congratulations to Mr. Lester on your appointment to the fire board. The main reason I'm calling in tonight is just to give a shout out to the C S C A workforce. As a resident, I was watching them work. I live on Riverside. Watching them work in a tough environment with that water leak and the busted pipe, and also during the snowstorm that morning. Those first few hours in the morning were pretty tough road conditions, and they were able to get the roads clear and passable for us to all participate safely to wherever we needed to go. So I just wanted to give them a shout out because their service is recognized by the residents as well.
So we'll always take compliments.
Yes, thank you for everyone's leadership.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, next is Lisa Spar. Hang on one second. Go ahead, Lisa.
Hi.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi. My name is Lisa Spar. I live at eight forty Shore Road. I have a couple of questions. First, could you give us a little bit more detail on the platform that's out on the ocean? I live way on the east side. And what Long Beach's role would be in whatever that has going on with that platform?
John, you want to take that? Mr. McNally?
Sure thing. That is, excuse me, that is Equinor Wind, the company that has been awarded the land lease for an offshore wind farm approximately fifteen miles off our coast by federal and state entities. What they are doing now, and they're doing it, the barge is the most visible of it, but they also have a boat in Reynolds Channel and will be having smaller operations onshore. They are doing, easiest way to state it is soil samples in order to test what will ultimately be their preferred route for running the electric cable from the offshore wind farm to a proposed substation at the E F Barrett Power Plant in Oceanside. The city has had, they've been in close communications with us so that we could let our residents know what's going on, but the only permits that were required, the only approval that was required for them to do this surveying work was through federal and state agencies. So the city has had no control over that. The city has had no control over the award process for them being awarded the bid for offshore winds. The only thing that the city will have direct control over, should it come to that, is if they decide that their preferred route for that electrical cable is to run through the City of Long Beach, the council will have to make a decision at that point in time whether they want to make that allowance, or if they can come to some sort of compromise or deal with Equinor through a community benefits package that, you know, we are able to extract enough of a benefit from the company in order to allow them to run the cable through city property. But just from a timeline, I'm sorry, Ms. Spar. So from a timeline, they are technically in Lido now. They started beginning of last week. They're supposed to be in Lido for approximately twenty days, and then they are to move to Long Beach, roughly the center of town in the area of Edwards Riverside. They'll be doing that work on that barge for approximately a month's time, and then that barge will be gone.
And after that, what's the, just the overall process for the pipeline and the wind farm?
So they are going through, again, a federal and state bureaucratic and environmental review process. There is at least one other. We've been working to try and, we've been trying to get them here in person. They did give one high-level overview to the council, I want to say, the better part of a year ago. But we want to get them to do Public Information Center sessions in the city. But there's really one other. My understanding is there's one other stop of the regulatory. So they are going through, again, a federal and state bureaucratic and environmental review process. There is at least one other. We've been working to try and, we've been trying to get them here in person. They did give one high-level overview to the council, I want to say, the better part of a year ago, but we want to get them to do Public Information Center sessions in the city, but there's really one other. My understanding is there's one other stop of the regulatory review process, and it's on the federal level where public comment is going to be welcomed in order to help the federal government make the decision. Construction of this would not start anytime before 2024, though.
Ms. Spar, this is Liz. You can look at their website and look at the past public session that they had in December as well to get some more information.
And John, you've done a great job in posting on the website, the city website, and on Facebook when there's updates, so thank you for that.
Is there, John, is there a way to, like, put that linkable, you know, so folks can go, like, right to our page, link to it, you know, under, like, public information areas?
We can definitely look at that. As of right now, I believe the listing is still there under News in Our City, especially we wanted to get out ahead of the barge being there because we knew it's a little bit of a jarring sight off our coast. We're used to looking at the barges, but this thing is pretty close. The work that they're doing is within a tenth of a mile and a half a mile, so this is, you know, a large vessel, very close to shore. So we've been running it on social media. It's also on the website, and they do have, in addition to their website, they have an actual individual that you can email with any questions that you have. So that's been on our social media posts and on our website, but we can put it on what we call, like, the slide reel on the website. We'll take that under consideration, and, you know, we can get it so it's prominently listed on the site.
Ms. Spar. Thank you.
Hey, we have Kathleen O'Leary.
Hello, Ms. O'Leary. How are you?
Good, thank you. I have a further question on the Equinor project. In addition to considering soil samples, are they also considering population density? Because having a cable run through the middle of a city is a risk for the city, and, you know, although I favor wind power, I don't see what benefit this has to anybody. You know, we're not going to get our bills lowered from this. It's just going to go into a pool of electricity. Nobody's going to get a lower bill, and we are, you know, kind of like the liquid gas project that was shut down a zillion times. You know, there are risks that are come associated with running a cable through a densely populated area. So, you know, I can think of places on the Barrier Island where there's maybe three houses that would be affected, and I just have been wondering about that question. Is that going to be a consideration in this? Thank you.
I mean, I'll jump in if that's okay with the council. You know, that is internally, from a staffing level, we've had these conversations with Equinor. We obviously realize that that is going to be the main concern of the residents. The time has not yet come for that discussion to take place publicly, but we do anticipate that being the issue. That's one of the reasons we want to bring him in for public information sessions, and that would be, right, so it's a trade-off that a council somewhere down the line will need to make of, you know, brokering, if they are amenable to the cable running through the city at all, what's the community benefits agreement that could be put in place to make it worthwhile for the residents of the city? So I think it's a valid concern, Ms. O'Leary. You know, the specifics of it, you know, it's not, it's not a gas pipeline where you need to worry about it exploding in the same way, but, you know, but there is obviously a concern, and we do want to make sure that the residents of Long Beach end up on the right side of this thing. So the early estimates that I'm seeing, it's all printed in Newsday, they're talking about this thing powering, you know, 2 million households. You know, this energy is going to go locally, not that you feel the difference in your house between something that's generated from wind versus a fossil fuel-based plant, but there is also, at this stage of the game, the economies of different energy production being what they are, they're saying, on average, this would probably cost ratepayers an additional 95 cents a month would be the impact that they're talking about.
Can I just ask, you know, there's other communities like Lido, which are much narrower in width, okay? Is Equinor specifically married to the idea of coming through Long Beach?
Oh, the survey work they're doing now is in Lido.
Right.
But their primary obstacle in terms of a transmission cable is getting across Reynolds Channel, and they are looking to do that in the narrowest place possible. So even if they come ashore in Lido, what it currently looks like is that they still want to come through Long Beach.
And what about Point Lookout?
Yeah.
Again, they're trying to get to, they're trying to get to Barrett Power Plant, so Point Lookout even gets them further away from their ultimate destination point.
So we're the most efficient and cost-effective way to get to Barrett is through Long Beach, right?
And I do think, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but crossing Reynolds Channel, you want to talk about the alphabet soup of regulatory agencies when you go through a, you know, a marshland and those kind of water bodies, things get exceedingly difficult. So I think that's probably the most pragmatic way to look at it. You know, it's not necessarily that this is the most efficient for a company, but in terms of actually getting a cable across a water body like an estuary that we have in Reynolds Channel, the least amount of environmental hurdles are going to be in the shortest distance possible. So I think that's, that's why they're looking at, that's why they're looking at that section of Long Beach.
And John, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but there would be a financial benefit to having it in Long Beach for the city of Long Beach. And also, I guess the danger you're talking about are EMFs. Kathleen, if I'm not mistaken, and it was one of those things that I had questioned, too, and my understanding is the, I'm not sure if it's concrete or whatever the shielding is, would be so dense that there would be virtually unmeasurable amounts of EMF to come through. Am I, John, am I?
Yeah, you're making me wait a little bit. I mean, the first part of the answer that you asked would be, yes, a community benefits agreement would have to be struck to where whatever council at the time, and very well could be this council, would have to make the determination that any kind of community benefits agreement ultimately was more of a benefit than the cost of this thing running through the city. So, yes, you would have, you would have that financial or other benefit. B, I am not, they will certainly say that, you know, this is not the only community by a long shot where these type of cables are run through. So the prevailing thought would be that this science has been tested, proven, that they know how to encase these things so that there are no adverse health, environmental, or other impacts on communities, but certainly, I think, Ms. O'Leary, you know, that's, she hit on what is going to be a major concern, so it'll be on Equinor to convince the public that this would, if it did in fact play throughout the city, it would not have those adverse impacts, but I am not going to say that I have the degrees or the knowledge base to make an affirmative statement where I can say I know this to be true or not.
Thank you for making sure it's on our radar, Kathleen. It's very important.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Dave?
That's it.
All right, I think we're done. Eight o'clock. Everyone, have a good evening, and we'll see you Thursday for the parking meeting, and if not, we'll see you on February 1st. Good night.
And folks, just a reminder, the Thursday meeting will be broadcast on YouTube.
Got it.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.